New trustee, student trustee appointment. Entertain a motion to approve the appointment of student trustee Ethan Manoffi.
So move.
Second.
And a motion from trustee Jamal, and I believe a second from trustee Wright. So we'll do a roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lane.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
And, excuse me, trustee Wright.
Aye.
All right. Next, you have 6.5 is the annual approval for the student trustee to receive compensation and to make second motions for board meetings.
I so moved.
I second it.
I had a motion from trustee Rydel, a second from trustee Melchiker. Go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lane.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydel.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Okay, now, we can go to 2.4. We'll do the oath of office. Student trustee Ethan Manoffi, are you ready?
Yes.
All right, so, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ethan Manoffi.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so, one more time, please pronounce your last name for me, so I can butcher it six or seven more times.
I'm Manoffi.
Manoffi, okay.
I think you can handle that.
I think I can do that one. It's the bonus of having a last name like Prendergast, I tend to be able to pick that up. All right. So that, we'll move on to 3.1, reports. We have any board reports? Well, guess I'll go down the list as it is listed on the agenda. I do not have any. Other than, actually, I take that back. I do want to thank trustee Ethan Manoffi for stepping up in this role. Unprecedented time, and it was kind of an unprecedented situation, so we wobbled it, and we appreciate you being available for that. So thank you, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Did you, trustee Jamal?
Oh, was that me? Sorry, I missed that. Well, I don't have a lengthy report, I just, I wanna say a couple things. One, I appreciate all that's being done on our campuses, our two colleges on our campuses, to respond to this unprecedented situation. We were very pleased to hear of the swift negotiations between our administration and the Faculty Association on how we're gonna handle our new normal going forward. I appreciate the work of Vice Chancellor Visca-Chill and Clara Cesario from the Faculty Association. Secondly, I just wanna say, I am not in the anti-mask crowd, I'm in the pro-mask crowd. I don't understand how we got to this situation. I do in part understand, but I'm not supportive of anything short of wearing your masks while in public. It's more than common sense, it's based on science, and I'm really proud of the work that our district has done to keep our students, our staff, and our faculty safe, and keep our students in the classroom, whether it's virtually or in person. I thank you all for that, and handed it back to trustee Prendergast.
Trustee Wright, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a brief report that I'd like to read. First of all, I want to thank the students and our dedicated faculty, administrators, and staff in our community college district. I applaud them for what they're doing. The board reports from Chancellor Kathleen Burke, Vice Chancellor Anne Maria Gabel, Acting President Cindy Visca-Chill, and President Ellet Stern are outstanding. My sincere thanks for them. Chancellor Burke made us aware that the South Orange County Community College District was mentioned in the discussion of an amnesty brief that was filled related to the July 6, 2020 order by ICE, affirming international students. We were one of the institutions on the court filing. Positive results were obtained. The agreement has been received to rescind last week's policy that would have prohibited IVCs and Saddleback Colleges F1 visa international students in the U.S. from taking a full online course load. And then finally, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College are preparing for the Fall 2020 Professional Development slash Flex Week on August the 10th through August the 14th. I just learned this afternoon that IVC's opening session will be held on Monday morning, August the 10th, and Saddleback College opening session will be held on Tuesday, August the 11th. Thank you.
Okay, next, trustee Jay.
Always among my favorite things to do was to drive by the new Saddleback Stadium to see how the construction was going. Then COVID-19 happened, and the campus was closed, cutting off my ability to observe the progress. I discovered that I could see the stadium by driving towards the ocean on Golden Lantern, turning left on Paseo de Colinas, and going down the hill towards Camino Capistrano to Avery Parkway. On the hill, there is a great view. It's distant, but the view of the facility, wow, it's fabulous. Unbelievable how grand it is. As soon as the stadium is turned over to the district, could we, as trustees, have a special tour of the entire facility, including the stadium and the practice fields? We will wear masks and stay six feet apart. This is a tremendous addition to the Saddleback campus, and we are very proud to have had a part in its creation. We are anxious to see the result of so many people's hard work.
Okay, next, trustee Lane.
Thank you. In the absence of adequate national leadership and effective state and local ability to control the spread of the COVID-19 pandemic and its continued spread in various areas, including here in Orange County, it will be important to proceed with an abundance of caution to protect the students and employees of our district. I support the administration's decision to minimize physical presence on our campuses until we are assured that such interaction can occur without risking further spread of the disease. My hope is that collectively, we will eventually be able to put politics aside and act in the best interests of our citizenry, but sadly fair that this will eventually only occur with the widespread introduction of an effective vaccine. In the meantime, my best wishes to all of you on your safety and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Melchiker.
Hey. Of course, all the meetings I attended this month were virtual, and I'll try not to repeat any of what my fellow trustees have said. Here are my virtual highlights for meetings I attended this month. I'm involved with the statewide trustee weekly webinars, which are every Thursday. The IVC Town Hall meeting with Acting President Visca-Chill. The Saddleback webinar on campus technology with President Stern. The Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, and our district is chairing it this year. The Saddleback College Live Arts Live at Home with Acting Dean Scott Farthing. The first one featured the lighting and sound designer Tim Swiss, who is a magician with lighting, and he showed us the magic of lighting in Saddleback College Theater. And then there was Quarantine Choreography with Scott Farthing and Dance Professor Deirdre Kabazi. All these performances can be found on the Saddleback College YouTube channel, and more of the performances preceded this. As my trustees have said, the schedule for Professional Development Week, which again is August 10th, August 14th, are currently on both colleges' websites, and I want to sincerely thank our academic senators for scheduling both presidents on different days so that we can attend both presidents' opening sessions. And I am looking forward to an inspirational week that week. Thanks.
All right, trustee Rydel.
Hello, everyone. I had a more quiet month, and for the sake of time, I will lend my time back to the board meeting, but I want to share it to everyone, be safe, and let's never let our guard down because it's still out there. Thank you.
All right. Student trustee Ethan Manoffi.
Another report, I just want to thank the board trustee and chancellor Burke for granting me this opportunity and trusting me with the new position. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Faculty Association.
I want to thank the trustees who acknowledged the work of the faculty in the spring when we shifted very suddenly from in-person to online instruction, and I just would like to remind the trustees and the public that although in the spring we were faced with very much a sink or swim circumstance where we were thrown into unavoidable and rapid shift to online, and the faculty really stepped up and did a tremendous amount of work to make sure that we were able to finish the spring semester, the work is nowhere near over because now we will be starting the fall and perhaps the next spring online. And so, although we did our best with what we had, those of us who were not already online instructors, now we have had a chance to prepare for the fall, and so a lot of my colleagues are working hard over the summer to put their classes together so that they will operate seamlessly in an online format. And so there's a tremendous amount of work, a lot of which will be done during the summer, some of which will be done during the Staff Development Week, and a lot of which will continue through the fall and spring semesters. And so, it's the amount of work the faculty is having to put in in order to make this work for our students is nowhere near over. And so I would like to make sure that everyone remembers as we move into the fall semester that there is a lot going on behind the scenes to make sure that our students have an effective instructional experience. Thank you.
And trustee Prendergast, I believe Eddie Tingston is filling in for June McLaughlin.
Okay.
Okay, just a few announcements. Since the last board trustees meeting, members of the Irvine Valley College faculty and senate have put on particular faculty open forum sessions. The first one actually happened before our last trustees meeting on the 8th, which focused on the current climate of the country. So it was a session that was overseen by several different faculty members on race, inclusion, and equity. The second item, faculty open forum, actually occurred on July 9th, which was a separate session focused on a screening convene. So what ended up happening is that faculty members wanted to also address the current zeitgeist of the country, and they had a screening of a very powerful documentary entitled White Like Me, featuring Tim Wise. And another item that's coming up at the end of the month, on July 30th, is another faculty open forum, which is entitled, focusing on the work of Ibram X. Kendi, who's the author of the book How to Be an Anti-Racist. And these events are open to classified and any other college employee. And the one thing that has been occurring is that faculty and staff know that because of what's been going on, and because we're so isolated from one another, these faculty open forum sessions kind of came out as a means to be proactive and engage. We don't have that luxury of meeting each other at the cooler or anything, so these particular sessions kind of came about. And we think it's something that the academic senate is feeling that this could be an opportunity to focus on greater development amongst colleagues, as well as providing additional development for our staff members. The other thing I wanted to mention is that a group of faculty members and staff and managers went to ENCORE at the end of June. You see, ENCORE, which was a National Convention on Race and ethnicity, was supposed to have its annual conference in New York City. It was canceled due to COVID, but they pivoted to an online format, and about 12 individuals, making up faculty, staff, and managers, attended the conference, and because of that, that kind of like set that catalyst for greater professional development for one another. So as some folks have indicated earlier, other trustees have indicated that the professional development opportunities are coming up. There are folks that will have a very large, robust offering focusing on equity, and of course, focusing on the direction of the college moving forward. Outside of that, oh, one last thing. The actual ANAPIZI program, Elevate Asian American Pacific Islanders at Irvine Valley College, is actually collaborating with additional local community organizations in UC Irvine to address the dialogue within its own community addressing anti-blackness. So they are having a series of five separate sessions the next consecutive Fridays from July 17th through August 14th, focusing on having a conversation with the community. And so, at that point, I think that's all I have to report at.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Yes, so since our last board meeting, we've had our final meeting with Acting President Dr. Visca-Chill. And so I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Cindy Visca-Chill from our IVC Classified Professionals for your enthusiastic support of our classified initiatives such as caring campus, your support of our professional development and participatory governance opportunities. Our monthly classified chats have been outstanding and a highlight for this year, and we greatly appreciate your leadership as our acting president in 2019, 2020. So, we did have a very productive year, given the state of affairs, but I wanted to mention a few things. This year, we do have key representation at the State of California's Community College level, N4CS. We have representation on our IVC Incident COVID-19 Pandemic Team. We've also been very involved in professional development initiatives like Franklin Covey, Irvine Chambers Women of Influence Conference, ENCORE, IEPi, USC Equity Institute, USC Alliance, virtual conferences, State Chancellor Office webinars and such. On the horizon, we are currently planning for our Flex Week presentations. We will have our Caring Campus Convocation, our fourth meeting, on August 11th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. And our general meeting on August 14th from 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and of course, all of them via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we have a board request to report. It's my understanding that that has been pulled, is that correct, trustee Jay?
Yes, it has. It's been pulled.
Thank you. So then we'll move on to 4.0, discussion item. We have two tonight, we'll start with 4.1, Facilities Master Plan. We got this nice little read in the mail, so if you have that, you might want to pull it out, or you can refer to the slides on the screen.
And I'd like to say that it's my pleasure to introduce Deborah Shepley with Ginsler, who is going to be doing our presentation tonight, but just so that the board knows that the document that trustee Prendergast just held up is a culmination of pretty much last fiscal year's work. We started in September, and we were able to finalize it and bring it to you tonight. So I will turn it over to Deborah to start the presentation.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. It is an absolute pleasure to be here this evening to present the South Orange County Community College District 2020 Facilities Master Plan. This is a long-range plan and will serve as a guide for future development. And what's important to note is the educational master plan that was approved last month serves as the foundation for this facilities master plan. It was developed in parallel, making sure that the educational plan informed the facilities' planning process. Next slide. So I'll begin with an overview of the planning process, and then we'll be, can you, hold on for one sec, and then I'll present the recommendations for each college. So what you're seeing right now is the six-step planning process. So what our team did is we were working hand-in-hand with district and college leaders to facilitate these six steps, which provided a framework for collecting all the information that was important to collect for the planning, to analyze it, and to engage with the campus communities to look at this information, to explore ideas, and to develop the recommendations that are presented as part of this long-range plan.
Welcome, Jerry Wood Rydel.
Next slide. So as just mentioned, the process began at the start of the fall semester, and each of these steps aligned with the development of the strategic plan, the district's strategic plan, and the college's educational master plan. So we worked closely with the designated task force from each of the colleges, and the task force included a broad representative group who met on a regular basis, and you can see the frequency of the meetings that are listed below. So we met with the task force at each of the colleges, and then we also engaged with other groups and committees throughout the planning process. And so we maximized the opportunities for engagement from September all the way through March. Right before COVID happened, timing worked out well that we were able to complete all the in-person collaboration and meetings in time before everything went virtual or online. Next. The planning process to develop this was very integrated. It made, we ensured that there was alignment and clear linkages to the strategic and educational planning effort. And on the next slide, you'll see that the goals, the district's strategic goals, are clearly linked and mapped to each of the development recommendations described in the plan. So in the next one, I want to highlight three key elements of the planning process. Number one, that the process was very, very participatory. It was designed, we designed a series of activities to provide opportunities for the many, many voices and perspectives of your campus communities to be part of the planning process. So in addition to the meetings we had with the task force and other meetings with other committees, we conducted a series of campus forums, as well as online surveys, so we can include broad engagement. And it was fantastic to include all the voices of your students, your faculty, and your staff. And everyone really appreciated being invited to be part of this planning conversation. The planning process is also very data-informed. So using all the qualitative data we collected through our analysis and through all the engagement that took place, we coupled that with all the key quantitative data elements that are critical for facilities' planning. Some of these included the enrollment forecast, looking out to the future, and we aligned that with information from the educational master plan, along with information from the chancellor's office. We looked closely at the facilities' condition assessment and used that information to inform decisions. And we did a detailed analysis of the college's space inventory to be able to look at current and projected space needs. We know that a question you might have, given where we are at this point in time, is how can we plan for the future beyond the pandemic that we're currently in? So how can we create this long-term framework to adapt to any unforeseen changes that you can never anticipate will happen? And so this master plan is designed to be dynamic. It is a high-level guide and a framework, and the recommendations for facilities are flexible so that they can adapt to address changes as they occur. They're designed to support evolving technology, as you're doing so well now and continue to do in the future, as well as evolving mechanical technology systems to make sure to support safe and healthy environments for your students. So the plan is dynamic and will continue to flex each year. So I'm gonna go to the, begin with Irvine Valley College recommendations, beginning with highlighting the linkages to your district's strategic goals. You see the four goals listed on the top that are mapped to the five facilities' planning principles were developed in discussions with the facilities' task force at Irvine Valley College. So these are the five facilities' planning principles that the college thought was most important to be thinking about and to guide all the recommendations that were developed. Beginning with student success. Each of the projects identified in the plan should be designed to enhance student success and to enhance students' ability to find those important resources they need in order to be successful. Also, to build a sense of community on campus, to develop the overall campus communities to support a feeling of safety and security, as well as a sense of belonging and pride. To develop the campus to support access and wayfinding, to find important programs and services, to improve efficiency, and that includes the elimination of some of the oldest and most underperforming facilities, and looking at brightsizing facilities to support program needs, as well as responsible stewardship to optimize all available resources. So here what you see is a picture of the existing campus, and all of the existing buildings are in gray, and the bright red indicates temporary or portable structure. On this slide, the buildings that just popped up are in bright blue, are the projects that are currently in design. So that includes the new Irvine Valley College Fine Arts Complex, a state-funded project, along with the new Student Services Building and the Student Union. The next set of buildings that are colored orange indicate those existing buildings that need to be renovated or repurposed in order to address the program needs or to support building deficiencies, and in some cases, to be repurposed to support new needs that need to be housed in them. So with these projects that are in design and the buildings that are planned to be renovated, this set up the framework for future development. And you see, the heart in the middle of the campus is what will be developed as a new, main, enlarged campus quad. And it is surrounded on three sides by the buildings with the core student support services that students need to be successful. In the Student Union, in the Student Services Building, and in the library, those support and instructional services that every student will find and will be easily available from that point in the middle of campus. And then that connects to a pedestrian network of paths that expands out. And on the next slide, you'll see how it connects to the new buildings that are placed, the new buildings over in the A quad, a reconstruction of a portion of the physical education complex, and a new, smaller building in the M&amp;O area of the campus. Parking was addressed as part of the master plan, and the recommendation is not to build new and the recommendation is not to build new parking, but to reconfigure existing lots to make, to improve the circulation and the efficiency. And with that reconfiguration, we're able to add 360 additional parking spaces within your existing parking structures. In addition, we're recommending, the master plan recommends photovoltaic shade structures to generate solar power, which will support your commitment to environmental stewardship and lead the path towards net zero. On the next slide, you'll see a new entry experience, which is created as part of the Student Services Project. So that's a new entry drive, a clarified drop-off that will be in front of the Student Services Building, and a circulation out to the right with a right turn only on Irvine Center Drive. So it will really clarify an area of congestion that's currently on the campus. Highlights what will be developed as a community trail, which will invite the community in to enjoy the campus and connect the inside of the campus core to what will be the future developed Jeffrey Open Space Trail. And so this is a summary slide of the full Facilities Master Plan recommendations for Irvine Valley College with the different projects highlighted based on color. And the projects in design on this particular slide are now a darker blue, and then the brighter blue are the future new construction project. And then on the next slide, what you'll see is a side-by-side of the existing campus today, Long Range Facilities Master Plan recommendations Irvine Valley College. And so now shifting over to Saddleback College, again, beginning with those important linkages from the strategic goals. And these four goals map to a set of five planning principles, which are specific to Saddleback College and developed, working hand-in-hand with the task force. We also begin with a focus on student success, of course, improving access to all those important services. The second talks about campus and community engagement, developing not only the overall campus, but also welcoming the community into the campus and enhancing those connections. Improving access and wayfinding, which is a bit more challenging in the Saddleback College campus due to the multiple levels or grades, but connecting all areas of the campus is a very important goal. Again, being effective and efficient and replacing older, underperforming buildings and rightsizing, designing for well-being, as well as the stewardship of resources and creating a culture of sustainability. So this is a plan of the existing campus. And there are some colors on here. The gray indicates the existing buildings. The dark navy indicates projects that are in design or construction. And then the brick color or dark red indicates those buildings that are temporary or portable. On this slide, what we've highlighted in the red are the facilities that are planned to be removed. And it includes all of the portable facilities, as well as two buildings that are planned to be demolished and replaced with permanent facilities. And all the functions are planned to move to permanent facilities. The areas that are outlined with the dash line were those areas that were identified in the master plan as areas that needed to be addressed based on issues, underperformances, or not addressing program needs, where major changes were warranted. So with this slide, highlights then of the core recommendations, beginning in the campus core, with the turquoise-colored buildings indicating new construction. And there's a number of buildings, including the existing Student Services Building is replaced with a new Student Union that is rightsized and shifted in footprint and designed to really support campus engagement adjacent to what would be a potential new. We'll just keep going from there. There's a Student Center. There's a new Science and Math Building. There's a Wellness Building and a new PE complex. There's also locations for additional parking to be added. And on the next slide, there's also an identification of a location for a future student, a potential student housing development on the lower campus. This is a key goal of the plan, and it's identified, and it's a wonderful use of that land when it becomes available. So this ties to a pedestrian network that connects all areas of the campus, including the multiple levels and to all the different spaces. And then this is highlighted on the next slide with a vehicular circulation, as well as the allocation of parking. And so the lighter color of parking indicates existing parking, and then the darker color of the burgundy indicates added parking. And then the dark, the darkest, most intense color of that part right there indicates locations for parking structures. And we've identified two. One adjacent to what will be the new Student Center and will be built into the sloped hillside above the existing parking. And then one adjacent to the Science and Math Building. This location, we located parking to be as close to the campus core as possible. And these two locations are placeholders for if and when parking is needed. These are the most desirable locations, and they tie into the circulation and lead directly into campus. On all of the parking lots, solar photovoltaics are recommended as well in order to generate solar energy, similar to at Irvine Valley College, and lead the path towards net zero. So this overall plan is the facilities' master plan for Saddleback College, the long-range plan. It shows all the projects together. And what you see on this is a comparison from the existing campus today to the long-range recommendations for the future. The Facilities Master Plan includes an implementation plan that describes an approach to implement each one of these projects. So it starts with what you're seeing now with the summary of the six phases that each project will go through as they are implemented. From the beginning, planning meetings with the stakeholder groups, all the way through construction and close-up. So an overall timeline you'll see on this slide includes all of the Facilities Master Plan projects with each of their schedules. And the timelines were developed and taken into account a number of factors, including addressing priorities and providing a logical sequence of activities to minimize disruption, to maximize state funding, and to balance the annual cash flow. For each of the projects, a budget was established. They were developed with estimators. They're based on industry standards, and they're based on a series of assumptions related to economic factors, as well as each one includes escalation. And if you click forward, you'll see how this continues on. And this last slide, that gets quite small because it goes on for several years, includes at the end a summary of the estimated cash flow year to year. And while the Facilities Master Plan recommendations is a long-range guide, these, this implementation schedule and these budgets will be reviewed and updated on an annual basis to respond and adjust as needed. So that concludes the presentation, and it was, a lot was developed. There was a lot of activity, a lot of work went into this. And it was a pleasure working with your campus communities to develop all this information that I did a very, very high-level overview in this brief presentation tonight. But there is time if there's questions related to any of the presentations.
I'm going to leave it to someone else to probably point out what's missing in my mind.
I know what you're going to say.
I'll start with trustee Jamal.
All right, well, I'll, maybe I'll save that one for you because I think we're talking about the same thing. My, thank you for that report. I did read the large folder or pamphlet or whatever you want to call that was sent. It was pretty significant. I had, I guess my question is just high-level is, you know, already, we were already moving in a direction, I think, in education or higher education away from a more of a brick-and-mortar model to online learning. And so then, and then we had COVID-19. How, you know, and then, of course, we had the start of the online college, the 115th college. And then we thought it might be shut down because of COVID-19. Now it looks like it might be staying. Deb, my question to you is, where do you think a brick-and-mortar learning is going over the long term? And how does it affect our facilities?
Well, things will change forever based on what's happening right now and probably never go back to exactly the way they are now. Yet, still feel very strongly, and we do in our practice and our firm and with all the higher education institutions we're partnering with, that there's still a very, very important place for campus and for those in-person activities to take place when we can all get back to campus, or at least some of us get back to camp. So it will be a mixture. The places will be very different in that they will be, have to be a lot more flexible. And there will be much more adaptability that needs to be inherently built into everything that is designed, that can adapt and to morph and can expand and contract as needed. And so facilities that are recommendation, where you did see a number of new facilities, they are rightsized and they are flexible. And specifically supported, designed to support those in-person activities that need to take place as hands-on learning, and other spaces that can support a combination of both in-person as well as virtual. So details will be worked out with each project as it goes, but there will be a need for a space and a place for people to come together and to get those important services. It just will start to look different and transition over time.
So one of the questions, I appreciate that. One of the, I don't, I don't have it in front of me. I can pull it up, was I think you had a question about where do you go to unwind? Or I think something like that. And I mean, I wasn't surprised that I think majority of respondents at both campuses, students and faculty and staff said, we go off-campus. So was there any thought to, I think you had something in there of trying to make the campus a destination?
Yes, in fact, there was a lot of, some of the recommendations related to student sex, success, and to building, for building community, is to keep students on campus before, after, and in-between classes in order to not leave to spend time off-campus. That was when we presented that finding to the task force. It was somewhat disturbing to say, why aren't people staying on campus? And it presented a huge opportunity to develop the campus, to encourage people to spend time there, to access perhaps expanded tutorial services or to get involved in an activity or to engage with other students or faculty or counselors. Because it has been proven, the more time students spend on campus, the more successful they'll be. So the outdoor spaces and places and those buildings that are designed to support collaboration, both inside and outside the classroom, are really emphasized in the plan.
Okay, and then one more question for me, and I'll turn it over. Did, I forgot, did you recommend a parking structure at IVC? Or no?
No, based on the land available, there was no need for an additional parking structure as identified in this master plan horizon. And so it looked like the forecast and the projected need for parking could be accommodated in surface parking, which is a much more economical approach. So just with some reconfiguring, configuration of existing surface parking lots, a net increase was identified, which was a lot more cost-effective.
Okay, I'll let someone else ask about ATEP. So thank you.
Trustee, or I'm sorry, student trustee Monafi.
So I don't have a question about ATEP. I just want to know if there was like another pandemic or anything like in the future, and a student had to come to class physically. I know right now, like in IVC, most classes are 45 people capacity, and they're like very small classes. In the new design, are we going to like add more space to the classrooms? Or are they just like the same design?
So in the new long-range facilities recommendations, there's placeholders for facilities and high-level recommendations for approximately how big buildings will be. It does not get to the level of how big each room within each building will be. So those will be decided and determined as a project is funded and a user group gets together. And that's when those important conversations need to take place. And at that time, whether the building, the room should be increased size so that they can be de-densified to spread out or to have rooms that can open into another room to expand, that's when those detailed conversations, design conversations and decisions will be made.
Okay, also, I signed the IVC map that Policy Department would replace a student activity center, reconstruct our houses, a student equity and inclusion center. Will those programs be relocated to a student union?
Yes, they'll be relocated as a student union in the heart of the campus. So it will increase access for the entire campus to get involved in those services, to make them a lot more essential and accessible, which does free up the, where they are currently for campus police, which puts campus police into a very visible upfront location and accessible to park.
Thank you.
Okay, now trustee.
I'm delighted we're having, we're creating a facilities master plan. I think it's really important. And of course, informed by our educational master plan, which we've done first, since we're an educational institution, that's key. And it's so important to plan where it makes sense to place our facilities. I really enjoy that you got so much input and that it's so flexible because we can't predict the future, but we can plan. We could be very thoughtful and plan for many different eventualities. And I have to say, I used your argument about student success rates always data-driven when I fought for funding for our current student service. As you know, Saddleback was founded in '67, and IVC was founded in '85. And Saddleback is beautifully hilly. It's a bit more challenging, and IVC is very flat and easy to build on. But I used to run on the Saddleback College track many, many years ago, and I was always awed by the beauty of being on top of the hill. When IVC had the luxury of planning their campus in '85, they very thoughtfully planned to create academic pods, each with its own discipline. And this made a lot of sense academically for our students. Are you continuing with this strategy at IVC, having discipline-centered pods at the, on the college campus?
The plan is to support and build on that concept of building academic courtyards, yes. And at the same time, to develop facilities that can also support interdisciplinary collaboration. Again, to create a more multipurpose space and fewer single-use spaces. By doing that, it'll improve your utilization, your efficiencies. But following that general model, which is a really strong model as it was developed, is still a very important element of the plan.
Thank you, it was a great model. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I put questions. As I think you mentioned, Ms. Shepley, in your remarks, accessibility is a whole different issue for IVC than at Saddleback. And I think one of the areas that, you know, we're all very aware of is this separation that we've got between upper and lower campus. And is there a means of trying to better connect those two? I didn't really see that addressed in the report. And, you know, some thoughts occurred to me. Should we be looking at more innovative ways to provide for better flexibility for students? Maybe something like a people mover like they have at West Virginia University, which would also have the added benefit of getting students out of their cars from having to go from one end of campus to another. So I'm interested in your thoughts on that matter.
So there are recommendations that are incorporated into the plan, but they deal primarily with gradual landscape progression pathways and sequences that reduce the severity of the differences between the different levels. And it's done that, it's done through a series of ramps and circulation paths that gradually work from the upper campus to the lower and vice versa. It also includes a closure of a portion of the road on the interior of the campus to create more of a pedestrian connection that ties then to ramping that moves up. We did not look at people movers. We looked at landscape improvements and recommendations that tie into your current ADA access plans that are currently underway.
that are currently underway and also by shifting and locating functions in locations that aren't currently used. For example, leveraging, if you see at the middle where the LRC is, to one side will be the new science and math building and to the other side is the new wellness center. So that's leveraging a middle ground of the, middle zone of the campus that will help be a connective tissue to the upper and to the lower. The recommendations are described in that way on this plan. As well as, what I shouldn't mention at all is also really important, is leveraging the buildings that are multi-story buildings and they fit in with the campus topography to improve access so that you can enter at a lower level and circulate freely and easily through the building to exit at an upper level and vice versa. So we're doing that in a multiple places for the three buildings that surround the campus core.
Okay, thank you. I think the only other item, and it's obviously not in this condensed report, had to do with the, your space, FMP space program, which was one of the exhibits on 6.1. And really just understanding what those columns meant between current inventory, adjusted inventory and comparing that with what you're showing for the master plan. And I don't know whether this is an appropriate time to do that or whether we'll have another opportunity when we look at the related subject items on this.
I was just going to say at page 63 of the big book for IVC. And then it's page 135 for Saddleback. So do you want to address that, Deb?
Yeah, and there is a description, but I'll enhance it a little bit more. It begins with the current inventory, column A. The adjusted inventory takes into account the removal of the temporary buildings, the temporary or portable structures. And then the master plan space program looks at the projected year, the time we're looking at 2030, and then applying state guidelines to forecast how much space per category was needed for the future. We did that and tend to compare and look at the difference to see if, if there was the right amount of space, if there was too much or too little. And this provided that framework and the initial guide as we were working towards developing, developing a right-sized campus. Because in some cases, we saw that some categories were overbuilt and some were underbuilt. And right sizing was really important in terms of giving, allocating the right amount of space for each type of use, as well as to position the college and the district to maximize state funding.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think it was confusing me was the differences between the current and adjusted inventory numbers and trying to understand the, the math associated with that, I guess.
Actually, I should add one more thing. In the adjusted, not all the numbers go down because it also took into account a series of projects that are currently in design. So in some cases, the space category went up because like, for example, on this, on this plan, the projects that are